All right, well, let's start. Who is, who may bring this up? So the attendance of starting the meeting, we just have four of us. Councillor Hanson, Councillor Broadhead, Mayor Heron and Councillor Mackay. I'm calling the meeting to order. Oh, that's good, thanks. Laurie's outside, or at least it looks like she is. Councillor Mackay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yeah, I did, I was sorry, I was just, didn't want a Council Watkins voice message to come through, so that the August 19th, 2020 agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you, all those in favor? Wes, there we go. And I see Nancy there, good to see you Nancy. So who honestly is leading this off, Laurie, are you leading this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I'm just going to share my screen. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. The format of this meeting will start with a summary of the background information leading up to the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Implementation Plan. We'll have a presentation on municipal partnerships from a non-market housing perspective from the Leduc Regional Housing Foundation. The Canadian Home Builders Association will follow with the information on housing affordability from a market perspective. After each speaker, there will be time for questions. Following that, we'll start the engagement process through focused conversations on various elements considered within the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Implementation Plan. In January, council provided direction for the city to focus on strategic planning and coordination of initiatives through a focus on municipal goals and priorities. This direction also indicated that the city would use municipal resources to expand the housing supply and leverage partnerships. Council also approved the direction for the city to be open to providing one-time capital grants or land donations. This direction also establishes the city as a key coordinating entity for housing within St. Albert's borders. Council also approved the direction for the city. St. Albert has a number of goals related to housing, including the availability of housing for all residents, that St. Albert is welcoming and inclusive, and that affordable and special needs housing is a key development goal. Every person has a right to adequate housing. The reality is that some people, no matter how hard they work, cannot afford housing provided by the market. We anticipate we will see an increased need for housing and support services as the impacts from COVID continue. One of council's strategic priorities for the 2018 to 2021 council term is to increase the variety of housing types in St. Albert to respond to market demands and accommodate the diverse needs of residents. This priority reflects that housing is a necessary foundation for economic and socially healthy cities. Within the city's corporate plan, Action 5.3 directed administration to create housing options to address issues of affordability and accessibility. A review of alternative practices for financing was also undertaken. Non-market housing is defined as being operated, funded or created through direct government subsidies based on associated services needed by clients. Market housing is supplied by the private market without the need for direct government subsidies. Within the housing continuum, non-market housing includes housing for emergency, transitional and supportive housing connected to the required supportive services. Community and affordable housing is provided at less than market rates, with community housing typically provided at 30% of household incomes for lower income households. Affordable housing is typically provided at 10% to 20% below market rates. Market housing, on the far right-hand side of the spectrum, does not require any level of government subsidy, but can be produced at lower cost for modest-sized units and amenities, requiring efficient use of land and building construction methods. The more supportive services needed, which is located by the arrows on the bottom of the slide, the more public funding is required to build and operate. 60% of St. Albert residents earn median incomes of about $100,000 a year. Those needs can be typically met by the private market. The remaining 40% of households may require assistance through non-market housing programs. The focus of the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Implementation Plan is on the 40% of households whose needs are not met through market housing. Households in core housing need cannot find alternative suitable rental accommodation for the family size within the housing market. In 2016, which is the most recent statistics available, 1,620 St. Albert households were identified as being in core housing need. This number is lower than Alberta average, but this is still a significant number of households. Minimum wages do not provide sufficient income to pay for market housing costs. The average rental cost of a one-bedroom apartment is $1,078, and that's in front of 2019, and would be affordable to a single person earning a minimum wage and working 40 hours a week. Single-person households would be paying approximately $300 more for shelter costs than the person who could reasonably afford. In order to provide council with a different development perspectives, Ms. Nancy Lang from the Leduc Foundation will provide information on the region's non-market housing development strategy in partnership with member municipalities. Following that, Mr. Adil Kodean will provide a perspective on non-market housing developers in response to non-market housing needs. There will be time for council to ask questions of each presenter. And now we can proceed with Nancy.
Thank you very much Laurie. Hello, your worship and council. Very pleased to be here today to share with you a little information on what Leduc Regional Housing Foundation has done over the last few years. May I share my screen?
Okay, Nancy, it's really good to have you here. You're going to provide a lot of insight.
I'd like to know how come the weather's so much nicer in Leduc than it is here?
We're very special.
Yeah, well, you have a special mayor, that's for sure.
We do that. You know, if I could just comment at the outset here, the work that the Capital Region Board did, for better or for worse, and we, there's lots of opinions on that, what it did do is build relationships, and it has been a fabulous piece to see the municipalities right across the region working so well together. So lovely that you would even comment on my mayor. I mean, I have. If I can just, talking about Leduc Regional Housing Foundation, we have certainly evolved from our beginning days of 1958 through to 2020. We won't start back at 1958 here all afternoon. But if I can move to, our mission as an organization is to provide high-quality affordable housing and services to seniors, individuals and families of modest means. The fact that we are at that point, and that statement has been with us now for 20 years, is the result of us moving from being a seniors' housing organization to that of a housing for all, and truly serving those of all age, all genders, all ways of life within our region. Speaking of our region, we are sandwiched in between the borders of the city of Edmonton, and they do creep a little bit to the south every once in a while, and the county of Washtasquen, and then on either side by a couple of other counties on the east, and then Brazo Foundation, sorry, the MD of Brazo on the west. A little part that's in Brazo used to be part of Leduc County, so we continue to treat those residents with a little bit of a special nature as well. So within the Leduc, what we call the Leduc region, we have seven municipalities. I believe they are all identified here, including New Sirepta, that used to be a village that is now part of Leduc County. We have the city of Leduc with our largest population, Beaumont second to the city of Leduc, then Devon, so both of these being cities, as you know, town of Devon, town of Calmar, village, sorry, town of Thorsby, that was 2010, and the village of Warburg. Our transformation to, from a seniors' housing organization to that of a cross-the-board began in 1993, when the government of Alberta decided to begin a consolidation process, and this was the change in the Alberta Housing Corporation that used to do a lot of mortgages, and they held a lot of property, and they divested of that, going from 1,200 employees down to about 200 eventually. There were 465 agencies reporting to the province at that time, and they said with that change in staff, there needed to be a change out in the field. So they asked us to look at what we could do within our region. There were nine agencies within the Leduc region that were all reporting to government, and by 1995, the seniors' apartments had merged with Leduc Regional Housing, and we had then taken on apartments in Beaumont, Devon, Calmar, additional apartments in Leduc, as well as four units in New Sirepta. The conversation continued, and the board took a little longer. The seniors' piece was pretty straightforward, we were already doing seniors' housing, but the next piece was about the family housing. Leduc and Calmar both had community housing that was owned by the provincial government, and whether this organization was going to really change how it did business and who it served. And after a year, the board did decide that we would do that, so effective January 1st of 96, we, the community housing merged with Leduc Regional Housing, and we were reestablished at that point as a housing management body. The Alberta Housing Act came into effect in July of 1994. There were pieces we were expected to do differently. We kind of dragged our feet a bit because there were changes we weren't thrilled about, but at the end of the day, we became a new entity as a housing management body, and then we're taking on community housing as well as rent subsidies. And so in here, we had 14 single-family homes in Calmar, Linsford Townhouse is a 42-unit townhouse complex plus two single-family homes, and then rent supplements that we took on directly in Leduc and Devon. Back in 96, private landlords didn't need us. They, they were doing just fine filling their buildings, but we went to a couple that had a little more of that community-based social conscience, and they said to me, "Why should we do this?" And I said, "Because it's the right thing to do to support the full range of people in our communities," and they agreed, and we had one landlord in Leduc and one in Devon to begin with, and we have built from there. Additions and affordable housing that we made subsequent to that, we weren't sitting idle. We had our lodge in Leduc was upgraded, our lodge in Warburg was upgraded. We received capital funding to add an addition to Plainview, and this was where we cut our teeth on development. We seconded a project manager from Alberta Infrastructure to work with us and show us the ropes, and we added 47 units to our facility at that point. We're now at 121, that's a very important number. Anything over 100 creates an economy of scale that is financially viable and can be done with limited or very small requisition dollars. Anything smaller than that creates a challenge. Our lodge in Warburg, you can see, has 60 units, and it runs a deficit every year. Fortunately, Plainview at 121 has a greater economy of scale and is, has to date, and I say that because COVID has played its role this year, but to date, we've been able to offset the deficit at Cloverleaf with the surplus that we run at Plainview. Profit, not being a bad term in the nonprofit world, but it needs to be profit with a purpose, and that's absolutely how we view the profit that we can make at Plainview. In addition, in 2007, this was our first foray into affordable housing. The city of Leduc received a grant from the provincial government. They'd actually received it back in 2002. You may recall affordable money coming out back then. And they built the Willows, a 24-unit project that you can see there. We agreed to manage the project on their behalf, and then realized we were offside with the Real Estate Act that requires us to have a broker on staff if we are managing others' properties. So in 2010, the Willows, title to the Willows was transferred to us. That was done for operational reasons, but also financial reasons. It did come with debt, unfortunately, but it has meant that, again, the number of units that we have, it makes it more viable for us to manage affordable housing across our region. The big change, of course, was the budget in 2007, 2008, and it's amazing to think that that was 13 years ago. Lots happened since then, but the funding that was provided to municipalities for affordable housing, each of our three municipalities within the region were identified as a high-need communities, and they had to meet two or three of the criteria that are shown on the slide. They all met that, Leduc were a little chagrined because it was due to census information that had not been updated at the provincial level, that meant they were only meeting two criteria instead of three. So they were very disappointed because they did miss out on some funding that they would have had otherwise. However, that was still $1.6 million that was to come to the region. Each municipality, as you can see, getting something, give or take, half a million dollars. There also was the additional $68 million available to be applied for, and we had to apply for that by the end of August of 2007. I'm just going to follow along. So the first thing that the municipalities did is the, because our board is made up of elected officials, one from each of the seven municipalities, and a second one from Leduc County, the councillors came to the board and said, "We've just been told we have half a million dollars, so long as we provide an affordable housing plan, what do we do with this? What, what is the right thing to do?" And I had, at that meeting, I do recall raising my hand and saying, "Well, give the money to me and I'll figure it out." That wasn't the easy answer, but what it did mean is that as an organization, Leduc Regional Housing needed to look at what we were going to do. Were we going to then collaborate with our municipalities and realize a really comprehensive housing strategy? What did that mean for our policies, municipal policies, bylaws, neighborhood mix? How did we deal with that? Partnering with agencies, you know, we provided that housing expertise, and we could develop, we had now done a number of projects to date. We could contribute dollars, and towards the 30% to 35% that the province would not fund in the affordable housing process. Also nominal sum disposition, when we received those 14 houses in 1996, we spent the next 10 years talking with four different ministers and every government that would listen to us, to ask for those houses to be re-profiled. We were wanting them turned over to us so that we could sell, and then use those proceeds, as we say, to convert, buy or build housing within the region. Equally, the municipalities had to look at their options of what to do with that half a million dollars in each one. I had spent a few weeks going around each municipality, working with councils and staff to talk about their options. They knew they could develop and operate affordable housing if they chose. They could look to us to develop and operate, where the dollars that we partner individually, the idea of using those funds for rent subsidies, possibly secondary suite grants, or the last item that was talked about was a regional partnership, by transferring those funds to us directly, and then develop a three-year program that would serve all three communities. At the end of the day, the municipalities decided to do the regional partnership. They transferred the funds to us and expected a three-year program to be developed. We then developed, owned and operate the housing. It also meant that we prepared the affordable housing plans for each of those three communities, and submitted those to the province so that the funds could flow. The rationale from the municipalities was that we already were the organization that had that municipal membership, and we also had the housing expertise, and they had some faith, and part of that faith was built on our years working here. Part of it was our board members of yesteryear were now the mayor. So Mayor Anita Fisher, who I know many of you know, she had been a board member on the Leduc Regional Housing for six years, and was then the mayor of the town of Devon. So when it came to moving forward, they knew who they were dealing with, and the relationships were happening at the same time through the Capital Region Board of the strengthening of the partnerships, and it led to, like I say, some faith and some goodwill going forward. And then the county stepped up as a fourth partner in this process to run a $3.5 million debenture for us. They had the boring room at that time that they were able to do this. It allowed us to have secure, low-cost financing. The worst thing that we can do as a nonprofit is to have financing that is short-term. Even if you've got the best rate in the world for five years, that does not help you because you just don't know what the impact of that's going to be five years down the road. So our debenture of $3.5 million, this was the second one the county had done for us. This one was 20 years, and it was secured in 2009. So again, we're halfway through that, which is, which is absolutely amazing. All of this contributed to the financial plan, and I-
Nancy, I think you just accidentally muted yourself.
Yes, she is.
I don't know how that happened, but I'm back. Okay, we're going to go back one here. Oh dear, so let me just. There we go.
Okay, IT, it happened again.
I don't know, I'm, you are muted, press alt.
No, you're good now.
Oh, it's telling me to press alt, okay, I won't touch anything. The purple line-
I'll have the IT staff watch you if you accidentally mute, they can unmute you.
Thank you. The $1.6 million you can see showing under the 2007, that was the first year of funding from the province's Municipal Sustainability Initiative, capital enhancement funds. What we actually used, though, was only $754,000, and the reason was because we had funding from other sources. So we had municipal land valued at $400,000. We did get a, we were successful in getting a provincial grant of $6.9 million. And I have to tell you, the reason Minister Daniluk of the day, so he was the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the three mayors, no, sorry, the four mayors, the board chair for Leduc Regional Housing and administration, all went and met with Minister Daniluk to make our case as to why this regional plan was the right thing to be funded, and why 6.9 was the right number to give us. And actually, our original request was to fund us for all three years because we were doing this as a collective. He listened and asked some questions, and then we saw him a week later, and he laughed because he said, "I'd already decided you guys were getting this, and it was because the municipalities had worked together." It, I just can't stress that enough. I mean, it was just such a wonderful thing that they came together to do something for each other. So 6.9 in that first year from the province, and you can see 2. almost 9 million in the second year, and another 1.5 in the third year. And then again, that municipal money came through. So you can see that we didn't spend all of the municipal money in each of the three years, so we had some of those funds left over. We contributed land, that would have been here in Leduc. We bought some land, the city of Leduc donated land, town of Devon and Beaumont all donated land. The province transferred title to a piece, well, we asked for it to be subdivided and transfer title of the bare land to us. They donated the building and the land, was right beside land in Beaumont that allowed us to build our affordable housing there. Very fortunate for a number of pieces to all come together. And at the end, of course, we balanced things out, but the important part there very much is the funding. Okay, so now my, that's not. Okay, so what this led to is, in Leduc, we bought a building so that we could get affordable housing hitting the ground running. Now, we didn't create as fast as we'd hoped, of course, because the building was full. So it meant that as people moved out, we moved affordable clients in, and that was a 20-unit apartment building, was built in 1978, so it has required some upgrades, and we've put a lot of money into that building, but it was great to be able to see something tangible right out of the gate. We then planned and built and opened in October of 2009 a 35-unit apartment building in Beaumont, the first multifamily housing in the city, what is now the city of Beaumont, so that was really neat to be able to do that. Interesting in terms of a mix, we have vacancies there today, and COVID has contributed to that somewhat, but we've always had a few vacancies. We then carried on, and the second year of the plan, so you can see that Devon didn't get any housing in that first year. They were running on faith that their money was then going to come through the next. So our plan was '08-'09, but development takes a little while, and that building didn't open until February of '11. 28 units, economic times had changed, we were able to build more than our original plan, so that was very positive. And then equally, the third year in Leduc, we were running it at the same time, and those two buildings opened, two 12-unit buildings originally planned as six on double lots here in the city, lovely little, very compact designs that our tenants absolutely love. And those 12 one-bedroom units opened in July and September, so 2011 was a very busy year. These are what they look like, so Yule Meadows Manor, the 20-unit apartment building, there's Villa Beauregard, the town of Beaumont of the day required a French theme, cost us $200,000 to update what was needed to make that a French-themed building. 2011, we have Madison, Connect Crossing, and then Leduc Terrace, which are mere images of each other. So then, because of those funds that we had not spent, the MSI Affordable Housing, we had just over $2 million left there to put towards something else. The province agreed that those funds were municipal and not provincial, and therefore, we were able to go back to the municipalities and offer a use of those. So between the nominal sum disposition of the houses, as well as the funding that was left from Leduc County's debenture, as well as the contribution from our own operation, $2.9 million in funding was put forward, and we built then Gates Landing, a 14-unit building here in Leduc, and also agreed to commit money to Habitat for Humanity, and the goal had been to bring Habitat Construction to each of the three communities. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that because we needed a builder who was willing to partner through the Habitat program, and it was only in the city of Leduc that we were able to have builders do that. So with that, and in between, we received a separate capital grant from the province of $1.2 million. We bought an acre of land in Calmar and built the first phase of a two-phase project. Phase two will come as the need of the community dictates, but the mechanical systems are all ready to accommodate the second phase as needed. So that opened in Calmar in 2013. Our Habitat homes, we had two in 13, one in 15 and one in 18 here in the city of Leduc. And then because of our partnership with Habitat, the question was, well, how else can we partner with you? So we built the walls and floor systems for the Gates Landing project, and that picture there is of the mayors and the MLAs of the day. We had them in the plant for a day, all swinging hammers and using all those lovely air tools that are so much fun to use. And that led to Gates Landing opening in Leduc of 2015 with commercial. It's a mixed-use building with commercial space on the bottom as required by the land use bylaw. It, just want to think, 860 volunteers assisted in the plant. I mean, it was amazing to see that built, and then we've got just one little piece, you can see, the old fire hall built in 1953. We own the land that this all sits on, and the goal is that that will be torn down eventually, and phase two of this project can be built. Again, the mechanical systems have all been put in to accommodate phase two, which will be another 17 units added to the downtown core of the city of Leduc. And then the last Habitat build we did was in July of last year, and that was done separate from the affordable plan. We chose to do that out of our own funds to bring that affordable homeownership option to the town of Devon. Our portfolio as of July 31st, we have 568 housing units and 204 rent subsidies that we use throughout the region. You can see we have supportive living, so our two seniors' lodges. We have a pilot project, we have one unit left of a pilot project that started 10 years ago, supported by the province. We're the project where we're able to subsidize low-income seniors in a private supportive living accommodation. The seniors' apartments in most of our communities, community housing, the provincial program only here in the city, that recently was upgraded from the 42 units, totally torn down over the last three years, and the second phase just opened here July 1st, so we have 64 units there. Rent subsidies have been a valuable contribution to supporting people throughout the region. They are on hold, as they, I'm sure, are in your community. And then our affordable, we have eight buildings of affordable housing in four communities for 153 units, and you can see the split of the units by the size of the, or by the municipality. Our program funding, just under $9 million, government funding in the supportive living, and then the community housing. Seniors' apartments tend to run pretty much break-even and affordable. There are no government operating dollars provided for that program, so it is our most vulnerable of any program. And the municipal requisition, as again, I suspect is the same with the city of St. Albert, it only is for the supportive living program, and right now, we requisition our seven municipalities half a million dollars a year. That was increased with the support of the municipalities to be able to recognize the funding of the debentures that we need to run to replace Plainview Manor at some point in the very near future. We do all of this across the housing spectrum, very similar to the housing continuum that Laurie had showed earlier, the non-market housing, and we were showing the government in the green and the affordable that we own in the yellow. The arrows showing the movement of many of our tenants through the programs into Habitat. Really neat that of the five homes, we were able to connect rent supplement family, one of our community housing families moved directly into housing. So a really great way to see that, and then of course, people do absolutely move into market. They graduate, as we say. We see all of our housing as predominantly short-term with people graduating to the market. Our growth from 1963, where we started with 32 lodge units, up to now something over 800 units, including the rent subsidies. It has been a heck of a ride. I've been here since 1991 and have been able to be involved as, in a fairly large part of this. It's really been a wonderful thing to see the services being able to be provided within our communities. In terms of, at July 31st, we're serving 996 people. Very interesting that 38% of the people that we serve are in the rent subsidies. The seniors' housing is actually the smallest part of what we do now in terms of people, and that a third of the people we serve are children. So what's next for us? Redevelopment of Plainview, as I mentioned, but there are no capital dollars available at the provincial level at this time, and unfortunately, may not be for the near future. Municipal conversations, the board have initiated municipal conversations over the last few years, where the seven municipalities- where the seven municipalities come together, councils and key administrative talk about what the needs are within the region. We start with housing very quickly. We go to services and transit, as I'm sure it won't be a surprise. And we try to circle back to then what can Laduke Regional Housing do to support municipalities, to support their citizens. And it is a little bit of a shift for us from being that standalone, siloed, housing-based organization to really being here to serve our municipalities and to do it on a regional basis. Crime fee housing, our goal, we're trying to duplicate what the city of Edmonton has. Very difficult to do with RCMP, with turnover of staff. The fact that we need to remain nimble, responsive and readiness, that's a, a very important part for us to be here, take advantage, what offerings are out there and respond to the needs of the community. Adding support services through partnerships, whether that social enterprises. We have a partnership with the George Spady Society in our lodge in Warburg, where we're serving non-senior complex need clients. It is utilizing what would have been vacancies in the facility and allows us then to serve seniors in the other part of the facility. Otherwise, we may not be able to keep that facility open. Affordable housing expansion, I mentioned that we have land in Laduke, Devon and Kalmar. Uh, we do not have any capital funds and we have debt that we need to get paid down before we can leverage the equity in the buildings and do more, but that certainly is on the books. And we will have a new executive director, Mark O'Haggerty will be starting on October first and I will be leaving on October sixteenth. So changes galore. All of this we do to one day achieve our vision that every senior individual and family of modest means that resides within the Laduke region lives in comfortable, safe and affordable housing. Thank you very much. If I had to answer any questions, if anybody has them.
I did not know you were leaving the foundation. Did I miss that somewhere?
Did I not mention that when we, when I saw you for lunch? I'm sorry.
You might have, that's true. Yeah. You're right. I think I tried to get you to come to St. Albert. Some of the good work here. Um, I've got lots of questions, but I'm gonna actually let council jump in first. Um, does anyone want to start?
I'm going to stop sharing my screen if that's all right, and then we'll be able to see everybody. Okay.
Okay, I'll start. So, so, you know, just so we're live streaming this right now, Nancy. So just for anyone in the public that's watching, so our comparable body would be Homeland Foundation, correct?
Correct, yes.
But you guys do things so very different, honestly. And I wish, Wes sat on the Homeland Foundation for how many years, Wes? At least four, maybe more.
Seven years.
Seven years, yeah, okay. So he might be able to help me some of this too. And Council Jolly is our current, um, board member, council member there, but she's not participating. So you had, you had slide, can you share your screen just one more time and go to slide fifteen?
Certainly. This, this. Uh, okay, now how do I do this? Cause. Okay, I'm sharing my screen. Let me see my screen. I, you, you have shared it, Nancy. So you just have to go back to the slide that you need.
Wasn't being responsive. There we go.
That one. Okay, so it kind of shows the spectrum of, of, of what your foundation is providing and it's huge. If you were to, and I don't know who knows the answer to this question, maybe it's Lori West or Nancy. If you were to do a comparable, um, chart for homeland, what would we see?
You'd see supportive living. So the seniors lodges that are throughout Homeland's region, especially now with Westlock, but very much lodges in, I believe, well, St. Albert's got more than one, Moreenville, Legale, uh, Redwater, uh, Gibbons. Right, right?
That's their, that's their core that they really focus on.
Well, and it was ours too, right? That was our, all of our beginnings as families for the seniors lodge program. Then the seniors apartments would be the second. They would have seniors apartments and I believe there's some, I'm sure there's some in the city of St. Albert.
Yes, we have ninety, uh, new seniors apartments that were developed. Uh, the first ones are developed around twenty-eleven and the second ones were completed around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Okay, those are not that program though. That program is the Senior Self-Contain program, which is a provincial housing program where seniors pay thirty percent of their income for rent. What I believe Lori is referring to is affordable housing, but there was seniors affordable housing capital money that was put out. And I believe that's what it was. One is at Northridge for sure.
Yeah, both are at Northridge.
Both are at Northridge, okay. Being built with the modular construction and going up, meeting with Marguerite and learning about that. Uh, fifty-five plus was my understanding of what that was targeted to, uh, as affordable. So you would see that piece of affordable, but I understand that it is not affordable that is targeted to non-seniors.
Right.
That is a little bit of a shift for us. We have, we have seniors in our affordable. We have a whole range of age. There is no age restriction in our affordable housing. Rent supplements, I don't understand that Homeland manages.
No, I don't think so.
Rent subsidy. And I understand they had community housing either.
We have, uh, we had two rent supplement funding streams. One was privately through our own affordable housing grant funding. Uh, we used approximately a million dollars for that. And we also, Capital Region Housing also manages rent supplements in the St. Albert and the Capital Region.
Right, and that would be, when I, because it's in green, that's government funded, provincially funded. So those are two private landlord and the direct-to-tenant rent subsidy programs that the province funds, yes.
But it's coordinated through your foundation.
Yes, we were asked back in nineteen ninety-six if we wanted to take on doing rent and supplements for our region. And I, I rarely say no to take something on because it will benefit our community. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, that's what it's about, so.
Um, we probably have less than five minutes left for this portion of the, of the session because we do have another speaker planned. So if there's, you know, if there's other questions that aren't, that you aren't able to answer, we can certainly, uh, provide the contact information for Nancy and she can provide it offline for you.
Okay, I just have a couple more. Lori, do you know if the Homeland Foundation has ever approached any of the municipalities to take on a loan on their behalf, much like Laduke County did for, for the Duke Foundation?
Um, I don't know if they've taken, they have taken on a loan themselves for, uh, the Northridge project, and I believe they're doing the same for the Moreenville project, Moreenville Affordable Housing project.
All right, but it sounded like Nancy said that Laduke County took that three point four million on. And then, so was that a cheaper rate? Is that why you did it that way, Nancy?
Absolutely. The Capital Finance Corporation has very good long-term funding. We've looked at things outside and nobody can touch it. Uh, the, the next best is one point higher, which is still not bad. And the, so, yes.
Yeah, and then you, but the foundation services that debt.
Absolutely.
Right, so I don't know if that's ever been, um, and I thought in the St. Albert and sub-regional area. Wes, do you remember?
Well, interesting, uh, there was a, there was a stretch of time there where the, there was a move by the province that they were going to shift how they were funding, uh, affordable housing. And they, they talked about being able to leverage our current assets and then use the funds. And, and then that never came to fruition. Nancy, you probably know better than I about that, but there was plans to build based on that. Uh, but it never came about. And then, uh, so the only bill that, uh, actually came to fruition while I was on the board was Northridge Phase Two. And, uh, and then we did get some funding from the province for that. Uh, right now, uh, they're working on the Moreenville, uh, affordable housing project. And then when we amalgamated with, uh, Westlock Foundation, of course, they had debt over there that they had used to build their, uh, facilities. And then during the merger agreement, uh, that debt was managed, uh, appropriately, I would say, but they, they looked after the debt that they had taken on. And the rest of us didn't have to bear with that.
It's always frustrated me that I watch what Nancy does down in Laduke and we just don't, we don't compare. It's the partnerships and I think it's that expanded in the scope that you do take on outside of just the seniors. And is Moreenville focused on outside seniors? I believe it might be.
Yeah, it's just a Moreenville Affordable Housing project, so yes, it's on seniors.
I see Ken waving his hand. Go ahead.
I, I'll be really quick because, yeah, I, I realize the time commitments. And I guess, I guess looking at that graph or that chart you had, and don't bring it back up, Nancy. But, you know, between, you know, still the city of Laduke is sixty-four percent, whether it's all across the board. And then combined now with Beaumont, even though they're a lot less, but they are starting to become a larger municipality and they will start to see needs, I'm sure, just similar to, uh, us. I don't know the history and, and Nancy, like when you joined, when, when you started, when you were like twelve years old. Um, the, um, like what's the history? Why, why, why did the big metropolitan areas or the larger metropolitan areas get lumped in with, with all of the smaller villages and, and towns whose needs are entirely different than what our needs are? I, I don't, with the housing authorities, I don't understand why, why that's happening. Cause to me, we have so many different issues.
I would be happy, I'd be thrilled to come and talk with you all on a different day because I could go on forever. But in terms of answering that question, the foundations were established from the late, uh, nineteen fifty through nineteen fifty-seven through until about nineteen sixty-five. And they were all about the social credit government, building seniors lodges. And this was, and this is crazy, but in nineteen fifty-eight, there was a report done, or fifty-six, a report done showing that there were too many people sitting in hospital that didn't need acute care, but they had no place to go. So the social credit government built seniors lodges as retirement homes for people to move out of the hospitals and into a residential model where they were out doing gardens, getting the food to cook in the lodge and they had matrons that slept there overnight and she was the security. And the commitment from the municipalities, the city or town of Laduke of the day donated the land for Plainview and it was a city block of land. And the province built the building and they turned over title. That was all done under a foundation charter. And that was done repeatedly. There were a hundred and, there's a hundred and forty lodges. So there must have been something about eighty foundation charters established across the province. Separate to that were housing authorities that were for family housing and they were done primarily in the Big Seven, though Laduke had a housing authority and so did Kalmar. So the idea that this should be done collectively because we're serving people was the conversation of the amalgamations in the nineteen nineties. We said yes, the board were, they had to give some thought to it. But at the end of the day, I said Capital Region will be the one to manage if we don't do it. They'll do a good job because they're a good organization, but they don't live here. They are, this is not their community. So what would you like to do? And at the end, they said, let's go. Now, it was a, it was a learning curve, no two ways about that. My staff were mad at me for about six months, but, but we, you know, we've come through this and I think we're, I think this is the right model. I'm promoting this through our affordable housing submission to the province. I think this model is what should be duplicated across the province. Because, and here's where it comes to the lodges in Laduke. The forty-eight percent of the people living in Plainview right now come from the county. So, and it's because they are the low-income senior. So many of the people that live in the city have been working in different means. They're not the farmers. They've got a different income stream from investments and pensions, right? So there, there is lots of history as to why this has happened the way it has. But we do things regionally. You, St. Albert is serving lots of people from outside the region. How do you, how do you deal with the housing piece?
Yeah, and that, but I, and I understand the continuum and as you move through, as you've mentioned and, and potentially, but I mean, a lot of that deals with seniors. And I, I'm just still trying to see the, the connect between the fact that now we've got a lot of young families that are in that trouble where they're more of the affordable housing and they gravitate because of work, because of services into the cent, urban centers. And so our needs are so much different. And so I'm not sure whether or not, why we, why we are captured in, in such a large regional impact when we, we just don't have the same issues. And by the way, I grew up in Linsford Apartments, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Great facility, like it's, it's a great place. And I think my answer to you would be that what, and I don't disagree, the work we're right now, our focus, that we as a province and certainly within regions, we need to look at how we can support people. No two ways about that. It is one piece of the puzzle because those people are going to age. The aged people will support. We can't do any of these pieces in silos. We have to do it as a matrix. And we need to consider and recognize those pieces together. I just think that's the only way that we can be effective. But I know way going past time, and Lori's about to.
I think Jackie wanted to jump in. I'll let Jackie have a quick question.
Sure, and, and, uh, you know, honestly, I didn't even know where to start, Nancy. That was an amazing presentation. And my head is just, uh, a flurry of ideas, uh, of which I would never know where to start. Um, but I, you did say something about having, uh, at least a hundred units in order to be sustainable. And I wondered if that means if we were to be able to find funding, uh, whether regional or through grants or whatever. Do you jump in and you build something that's at least a hundred units or do you build up to that or? Yeah.
Hundred units, it's about a supportive living or a seniors lodge. It's not about affordable housing. There is some economy of scale with affordable too, but it's the lodge program because of the twenty-four hour staffing.
Okay.
Service models that you have, that, that viability is just not there for anything below a hundred units, especially on a subsidized, you know, when you're looking at a, for a low-income client. There is government funding, but low-income client. So I would, personally, I wouldn't build less than a hundred. Now, I'm not a politician though. So how has that political perspective though, in seriousness? What is, what do we do to support our small communities? Is the decision made to build something, a thirty unit, which they, the province did build years ago? Sixty units in Warburg. Warburg's got seven hundred and fifty people. We have a sixty-unit lodge out there. So if the decision regionally, and I say politically, because I believe there is a huge piece of that, is to say, yes, that is what we want, then you take the, the deficits with it and you expect that that's where taxpayer money is going to be going. Or you say, we're going to do this as a region and just like Walmart doesn't build in every community and we all seem to get there when we need something, do we do the same thing around services and supports? And those are decisions that are way above my pay grade. But at the end of the day, if I'm offered money, I will jump in and build because there's just a need everywhere.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it is really above your pay grade because look what you've just accomplished. You're, you're incredible. So I'll leave it there, uh, just with, um, with a great deal of thanks to you for sharing this story. Obviously, it's a long story and it goes back to nineteen fifty-eight. I guess I'd say, is there anything else in the province that looks like this or are you, are you just yet?
No, 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 of course not. Um, we've got, this model is getting ground. So, uh, Hart River Housing, uh, which is High Prairie, uh, North Peace Housing out of Peace River. Grand Spirit is not quite the same. I think there's a little more they can be doing there. Yellowhead area, they've had some consolidations with Hinton, Edson, Jasper and Evansburg, where they're looking at all the pieces. Uh, even Sherwood Park, Nancy Simas is the new executive director out there. The, some of these places don't have community housing and that's that deep subsidy for families. But they do have seniors apartments. They're getting into affordable housing. So I, yes, and then south, we have, there's to the south, we have colleagues down there, uh, High, High River. Yes, High River, uh, area just south of Calgary. The big municipalities, it's, it's a little different. There might be enough units to warrant specialization. But you really got to look at that. We've got five hundred and sixty-eight units and I still question whether that's enough units for us to still stand alone. I mean, we're doing okay, but could we be better if we were at a thousand? Sure, because then we've got the depth of your skill development within your administration and the ability to respond. But I don't think we're small enough that we need to amalgamate with Capital Region, for example. So you're always looking at what's the best use of the dollar.
Right, there's that balance. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If we could, Mr. Adil Kodean is waiting now, so maybe we could move on and, uh, we could certainly provide contact information for Nancy if you have additional questions.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much. And if I can, I'll just sit in and listen to the next presentation.
That'd be great. Yeah, thanks, Nancy. And I'm so sorry, Adil, that we are so chatty today and asking lots of questions, but this is an important subject for St. Albert, so.
Absolutely, not, not a problem. Um, I don't, I don't have a set of slides prepared. I'm just going to go off and make a few comments based on, um, some of the notes that, uh, I've seen from Lori about the topic as well, uh, from that. So I guess, uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of St. Albert City Council. My name is Adil Kodean and today I'm here on behalf of the. My name is Adel Codian and today I'm here on behalf of the Canadian Home Builders Association Edmonton Region. I'm the Vice President of Royd Communities and we're a full service real estate firm in Alberta and Saskatchewan. From an affordable housing perspective, Royd is one of the two first place program builders in the city of Edmonton. We built a few hundred affordable housing units in multiple locations in the city. We are also one of the original founders of Habitat Day in the capital region. Which has resulted in a lot of houses being donated by multiple builders into the Habitat program. We're a strong supporter of the affordable housing file. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present on the topic of affordable housing. Our focus is going to primarily be around the near market affordable housing. Which I think is a significant need in the St. Albert market from our perspective. Attainable, attainably priced rental and for sale housing are critical to a community's growth. In St. Albert, I think there are two groups of buyers who will most likely need affordable housing as we go forward. The first is a group of people who have lived all their lives in St. Albert and are now looking to make affordable choices. As the kids move out and they start looking towards retirement. The second group is all the young people who are now at the point of looking for their first job, their first home. And are considering their alternatives of how they can continue to stay in St. Albert and work there affordably. For St. Albert to retain its current population and grow by a projected thousand residents and five hundred jobs a year. Young professionals and seniors have to be able to afford to live there first. St. Albert has been deservedly rated by MoneySense as the best place to live in Canada, but to continue to retain that position of leadership. The community has to solve the affordability conundrum that exists for existing residents as well as for the new people who want, who may want to live there. The price of the house and ultimately affordability is primarily determined by three things. Land costs, building costs and the process cost of various regulation and processes. A healthy and balanced market should actually support, supply sufficient near market affordable housing choices. And we'll talk about financial and regulatory incentives in a bit and some ideas around that, but those fixes are typically needed. If some factor is out of whack causing input costs of housing and pricing indirect or directly to be rising. Affordable housing and adequate predictable supply of serviced lots are almost an interchangeable concept. You can't have affordable housing without a stable supply of properly sized and zoned lots. Our consumers today ask for a much wider variety of product choices than in the past. Any restrictions on small or medium sized products, increasing development standards, increasing offsite levies. Drive lot cost and inevitably housing cost. New products like zero lot lines, front and rear garage duplexes, sixteen and eighteen pocket townhomes. And high density stacked townhomes are recent housing innovations. They're in response to the economic conditions, financing conditions, lending restrictions and so on. These products use land much more efficiently and need to be available as product choices. Take an example of a zero lot line, it can reduce the cost of a typical single family home by twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. By simply taking three front feet of land out of the side yard, which is rarely used by the person living in the house. Duplexes, townhomes, secondary suites, garage suites, et cetera, are options that. Cause a lot of investors to introduce secondary rental market supply into the market. It's, small lots aren't just about improving affordability and or density. Our consumers are now demanding more closed nets and diverse communities where multiple product types are integrated into the same neighborhood. They want commercial that's near the community or even in the community and they want to walk to the coffee shop instead of driving there. Instead of large distant park spaces, people want more parks, even if they're smaller, that are located better. Even if the individual parks aren't fully amenitized or anything like that. They prioritize their ability to walk the kids and dogs over to the park way more than the pure size of the amenity. All of this leads to a very balanced and desirable community where the grandfather, father, son and grandson can all afford to live in this same community. In homes that they can actually afford and they choose to buy those. Population trends are now pointing to an increasing need for smaller and more affordable starter homes. You, you're seeing the growth of blended families that need housing with suites. You're seeing the the fastest growing psychographic in the market is the single household or the single parent household. We have to meet those needs. Finally, regional density targets are now also a real thing, which means. You cannot build a subdivision with only twenty five percent of small product. Unfortunately, the mix will change. In, in, for to, towards smaller products. Now, most planning processes, and this is where the process component comes in. Require the developer and the builder to know years in advance what the consumer needs will be. This is impossible. How do we know eight years from today or six years from today? What the conditions will be and what the consumer will want to buy. This means that developers and builders will often end up stuck with obsolete lot designs. And if it takes a couple of years to change a lot design, often the benefit of changing the design eats away at the. It is eaten away by the process cost of changing it. The response in various municipalities and partly this is, this influences affordability because. You can respond to the market's ability to afford a home. Has led to the creation of flexible zoning like RMD and RLD in Edmonton or RG and MG in Calgary. Which allow much greater flexibility. The zone has, zone is more performance based than it is a form based. What that means is that the developer can wait until servicing time or subdivision application time, sorry. To decide whether to service the block as duplexes, zero lot lines, single family homes and so on. Edmonton's open option parking has taken affordability to the next level. Parking can cost between ten and sixty thousand dollars a stall, depending on the structure the parking is provided in. If you don't need to provide parking, that, if if the consumer cannot afford the parking. Edmonton will now allow the ability to provide a home that doesn't necessarily have parking forced on the consumer. Edmonton's missing middle zoning is also about affordability. Maximum densities have been removed. And they moved towards performance based zoning as opposed to restrictions based on form and unit counts. So to remove, to improve affordability from the get go, we recommend looking at restrictions on small lots. Addition of flexible zones and and introducing small lot products like zero lot lines. Then there is the cost of the building structure. As a builder, I'd like to tell you I have some control over it, but I don't. In this case, most of us are in the industry are the proverbial flies on the hippos back. Being next to the US and buying just about everything from China means that we are price takers, not price setters. As an example, lumber went up ten thousand dollars in thirty days per home. And there is absolutely nothing we can do about it, except continue building. All we can do is be vigilant about the impact regulation imposed costs create, for example. And and technology, with technology, especially building technology, there is a cost curve when it comes to construction. Or energy efficiency standards. There is always a point of good enough before the costs don't make any sense. There is an exponential component to that cost curve. Finally, it is, it's the cost of, finally affordability is impacted by time. Which is time required for plan approval, permit review, permit approval, inspections and so on. All this time simply means that the developer or builder has to borrow money from the bank. So the longer the hold, the more the interest and opportunity cost. Now let's throw a little bit of uncertainty in and the developer or the builder has to price in investment risk. All of this gets passed on to the end home buyer and hence contributes negatively to affordability. What, what this creates sometimes is a short term, short term lot supply crunch. Which suddenly enriches existing homeowners while taking away affordability for many first time buyers. Now let's talk a little bit about incentives. Incentives, both financial and non-financial, have a strong role to play in stimulating construction of affordable housing. As a level setting data point, we have to keep in mind that as a, as per the recent RE/MAX report. The Edmonton region or capital region is the third most affordable housing market in Canada. We're only beaten by Regina and Benipet. Most affordable housing financial incentives come with significant and somewhat contradictory constraints in practice. The incentives are also somewhat geared towards nonprofit or government agencies producing the housing. And I'll come back to. You know, some of our recommendations in a bit. If St. Albert is contemplating financial incentives for affordable housing, it's worth looking at and learning from some of the incentives out there and what the results have been. One example is CMHC's multi-family affordable housing fund. It requires that a number of the units in the project be sold substantially under market price. But the building itself has to perform significantly above the energy code and provide a large number of accessible units. It is very tough to make projects feasible because the market priced units cannot generate enough return. Given the overall low pricing in Edmonton to make up for the non-market price units. Without seeing market returns, a for-profit developer would struggle to use the incentive to produce affordable housing. So while the incentive is great and it exists, the way the constraints are set up make it nearly impossible for a, for a private developer to, developer to participate. One, one of the things this does not consider is that the market today is very unforgiving to builders and developers who do not adapt and innovate. Without subsidies, the industry has to make a profit despite the fact that the market price of housing is so low. And our costs are either increasing or at least the same. One positive out of all of this competitiveness or hyper competitiveness is that there are leaps and bounds in product innovation and cost engineering. We have, we now produce at a much better cost and a much better efficiency than ever before. Because the alternative is that builders who don't do that, don't make it through this economic cycle.
Would we be able to sort of conclude quickly, fairly quickly, a couple of minutes for questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Another program that that is out there that is quite interesting is the CMHC Flex Financing Program, which is an affordable rental program. Cool feature about that program is that one, a private developer can execute a affordability agreement with a municipality. And construct affordable housing units that are capped to be below mark, some of them are capped to be below market price. It's a great way of producing affordable rental with no capital investment. Then there are programs like the city of Edmonton's first place subprogram for home buyers. It has resulted in great number of units being created into the affordable housing pool. But the hidden cost of it is multiple years of consultation. Constant overs, oversight by administration to make sure that no one's violating the affordability constraints and so on. Finally, there are regulatory incentives. You can always speed up approvals for a project that has affordability components to it. Lots of value in relaxing minimum parking, maximum density setbacks, et cetera. To, to translate the savings into affordable housing. Lots of examples of this kind of programs exist in there. So our recommendation is to look at a combination of a financial subsidy matching money from other orders of government. Regulatory incentives and then actually also include the private sector in competing for the business of producing affordable housing. In closing, I would summarize this presentation with the following affordability and efficiency of land use going hand in hand. Any, any change in land use must always include some kind of an assessment on its, of the impact on affordability. Regulatory flexibility should permit innovation. Because innovation sometimes can solve the affordability constraint faster than we can regulate it in place. Fine, finally, we recommend designing an incentive, which is a combination of financial and regulatory incentives. So you can leverage dollars and other benefits available from other orders of government or even CMC. So I guess, thank you very much for your time today. I'm available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Adele. Okay, questions, guys? Go ahead, Jackie.
Thanks, Adele. I wonder, I was kind of interested in the no parking part of your presentation. And I, and maybe this question is maybe for Lori or for anyone who can answer it. Do we have an appetite like that to? You know, the first thing that comes to mind actually is that building that sits on St. Albert Trail that nobody can get in and out of and it sits empty. And I'm thinking that office building should be repurposed to units, rental units. And because it has no parking and put a bus there. But I don't even know if there's an appetite like that in St. Albert. Has that, do we talk about that?
I think the question about appetite needs to be directed at your council colleagues.
Yeah, okay, well, our, our, and we talk about wanting to diversify our housing. And we're doing a little bit more of that, as Adele said, that that's really important to be able to respond to the needs of our residents in a variety of way. But no parking, have we talked about?
So Edmonton's done it. When I was down in Calgary last week, I was walking around with other councils, they put up a high rise with zero parking about. Three or four years ago, that's highly successful, but I see both Adrian and Christina popped on the screen, so I think they want to chime in, so I don't know which one. Adrian, you got your mic, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's something that we've definitely been paying attention to for the last few years and. We've just been kind of putting it on hold until we get some of the policy structure in place through the MDP and then we want to. Dig into, with council, of course, not, not our preference, but with council to. To see what the appetite really is for changes to the parking requirements in the city because we are aware. That in some cases, we do have quite a surplus of surface parking and that does impact a lot of things for the cities.
Christina, do you have anything to add?
No, I would generally agree exactly with what Adrian said. Just to expand as well. Committee, we went to committee as a planning group with, and Lori did support that project. She was a key member on that team to talk about housing diversification. So some of the products that were just discussed. We will also be coming back to council as directed through committee to discuss a little bit later on in the fall. And then, sorry, in December probably. And then we'll also be back in June of next year to, to round out the. I guess, looking at adding increased diversification for our housing product with the, with the hope to increase affordability.
So can you take a building that's an office building and turn it into housing? Not housing, but apartments, units? I'm just asking that in a very general way. Has that ever been done?
In, in a general way, yes, but there are some challenges with the building to convert from office to residential. Usually it's about the height of the stories and building code and all of, all such stuff, but. Within our corridor commercial area, so the one that you're speaking of very specifically. But there's nothing precluding it necessarily from the land use component. We do enable apartments. As a use within the corridor commercial, so it is possible. I just don't know how feasible or realistic it would be for that specific building.
Right, it was just the first thing that came to mind when Adele talked about no parking because that's the, that's the big no parking building in our, in our.
Maybe I can comment on that one, which is part of the challenge we run into repurposing buildings often is that. If a building's old enough, it's almost cheaper to raise it to the ground and rebuild it. Like, it's not. The part of, I sit on the Board of Build Green Canada, so it's extremely ecologically unsound to go demo something that's completely functional. But the, the financial metrics of projects typically don't. They don't work really easily to convert these buildings without stripping it down to the bare bones. It's.
This is a brand new building that she's referring to. I don't think anyone's ever been a resident of it. Wes, I saw your hand go up, and then Ken.
Yeah, interesting. I really appreciated your presentation, Adele. And certainly, it's been an interesting journey and Adrian and Christina could probably attest to it, just the whole idea. And Mary Herron, we've been here for ten years now. The, the idea of introducing more affordable housing stock into St. Albert has not been without its challenges. The, the, the community of St. Albert is, is grown in a certain way and and people sort of like what they've got. Having said that, zero lot lines and smaller product are starting to be introduced. Have you? Have you watched similar activities happen in other communities like St. Albert? And is there, is there some advice that you could give to council that says, hey? Here are some of the, sort of the rocks that you need to be aware of as you start to introduce change to your community like this?
So we've seen the, the concept of a zero lot line, rear detached and a zero lot line front attached. Being introduced in Stratton County, for example, which is sort of not the same, but similar size. We also build in Regina and they are now, I've been at their, with their planning group. And they are now considering the introduction of these kinds of products out there. Some of the, so obviously lots of interest, some of the cautionary items would be more the, more design criteria around. Around how these lots are incorporated into subdivisions. So. For example, if you have a front attached zero lot line facing another front attached zero lot line on a twelve meter road cross section. yes, there'll be plenty of parking all around the subdivision, just not anywhere near to where people want to park. So overall, when you look at the parking impact, that's, so Edmonton did a very comprehensive parking impact study where they had someone literally count the number of people using a parking spot. And what they found was 90% of the parking was barely used 10% of the time. Like, I don't remember the exact stat, but you find peaks and valleys in this. So when designing in zero lot lines, it's important to have good streetscape. Like, don't just build the exact same product on a straight linear line facing another one of the exact same, mix and match. In Edmonton, for example, a front attached zero has to face either a regular front attached product or a rear detached product of some kind. Otherwise, you, so those are some of the design constraints. And that would be important elements. The rest of it would be on the servicing side. You know, the developers have to kind of service it a little bit differently because now the houses are on the property line. Zero lot lines aren't just being introduced in the affordable side. So one mechanism of using zero lot lines is to bring a 24-pocket home. So that's the affordable side. But you can also introduce a zero lot line in a wide shallow concept, which is like a 36-pocket home. So these are not affordable homes, they're very high-end estate homes. But the zero lot line allows them to price it such that the market can afford it better. And they have different design criteria. So those are some of the struggles slash constraints to look for in there. Another element I would strongly also recommend is from a building code perspective, it's not entirely. So City of Edmonton had to issue a supplemental design guideline for how to construct the sidewall. I would highly recommend, as you go down that path, I would take that sort of a guideline and let the builders know so that not every builder is designing a custom assembly for the sidewall, for example.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
You know, years ago, is Nancy still here? She was a second ago. She's still on there. Nancy, if you can hear me. There was a report in 2012 that Nancy and I participated in, it was called Our Affordable Futures, and it was through this then CRB, and I'm looking at the recommendations from that right now. And it says municipalities and industry agree to work together to review planning regulations and zoning bylaws for opportunities. A lot of the work that was done by the CRB really was not followed through. And maybe there's an opportunity to dust this off. And because it talks about here, develop innovative and creative housing development proposals to create market affordable housing, joint review of infrastructure development standards to identify new approaches to reduce the cost. Like, there's a lot of good recommendations here. They just didn't, they didn't get enough wind underneath their wings to take flight, I guess is the right way to see it. So I think we did some of it. Part of it was identifying champions in both administration and council and all the municipalities in the region to lead this and have further conversations. So I can easily find champions on my council, I would think, to champion this a bit more. Any more questions for Adele? Am I saying that right? Adele? Go ahead, Ken.
Just following up, just hitting that one piece that you talked about, Adele. And I'm sure you're aware and you're following, we are, as councillor Broadhead said, we are certainly going down the path towards some of your ideas. But one of the points that you brought out has certainly come back to impact us a number of times now. And it's around the idea that you're holding a parcel of land, you're developed, you have a concept. And you may have it for a lengthy period of time and you have, you know, preliminary ASP up there. And then you're sitting where you're being tied to that. What processes that would allow, because I mean, as you can imagine and as we've seen witness to recently, you have residents who have bought in to a adjoining parcel. And they buy in with the idea that this is what's going to be built next to me. And then several years later, lo and behold, when it gets developed, there's applications to change. So how do we, how do we, like, you as a builder, how do you deal with that? How do you reconcile that? Or are there any examples or is it is what it is?
Part of it is, I guess, there are no easy answers, obviously, in this scenario. Part of the recommendation, and we go through this as a builder developer, lots of public consultation, lots of public, you know, input into how this is going to get up, get there. Some of this is, for the feasibility, if the developer has to design products that no one is going to buy based on the plan, then that land never comes on anyway. It's not going to be financed, it's not going to be sold, and so on. So there's no door A and door B here. Door B is some form of, here is what is feasible. Now, in that envelope of feasibility, public consultations have to be done sufficiently to figure out what is the best case scenario for how to use that particular piece of land. And a part of the challenges are the change in affordability and change in costs have been fairly dramatic over the last 12, 15 years. So it is feasible that individuals who bought into part one of a community or phase one of a community, by phase 15, the products look entirely different. So this is, this is unfortunately the new reality we walk into. And as, one of the issues that will come in is that you might have some communities that are not part of the new regional density requirement. And then you'll have other communities, new communities that are part of the density requirement. So the developer servicing this has to figure out, wait a minute, person can cross over the road and get a house for 20 grand cheaper. How do I make this feasible, you know, or am I forced to not touch the land? So that is the complexity in all of this. And honestly, the only answer is as much public involvement and input. And then trying to explain the situation that the feasible area of, for this particular subdivision does not include no change.
Yep. And I guess it would have to be. And I see where you're, I wasn't thinking you were going to come up with a magic bullet and that you knew where it was. I was just saying that potentially it does provide constant public consultation and public awareness so that they're engaged all the time, so.
And sometimes, I think as I mentioned earlier also, some of the new changes are also, so if you live in a community 25 years ago, it's pretty normal to have to get into your car and drive 10 minutes to go get a coffee. The new communities, as they're being designed, they're designing in good, solid neighborhood commercial that's very attractive, with pocket parks and so on. So the older individuals living in these older communities also look at future opportunities for them to upgrade. Would you like to walk to a park? Would you like to just walk to the coffee shop and so on? And that's, I think, more of the positive side of the conversation, too.
All right, thanks.
Is it possible to move on to the rest of the workshop? We do need to get some council input, too, as well.
I'm sorry, Laurie. Yes, of course it is. Go ahead.
All right.
It's a good thing the other three aren't here. There'll be even more questions.
Yeah, a second. All right. Okay, can you see that screen?
Nope.
No?
I want to know why my car's parked in your driveway.
Oh, okay. Just a second.
There we go. That works.
Okay, all right. All right. Also, do you need a five-minute break or are you okay for going on ahead?
I think we're, I need to go to the bathroom.
Okay.
I can hold it. I can tell you're stressed, you've got lots to talk about, so go ahead, Laurie.
Well, no, if you want to take a five-minute break, that's fine.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, Kathy, because then Laurie can just get, take a breather.
Okay, all right. Let's keep that five minutes, though.
Okay.
I'm back. Is anyone else here? Is Laurie back?
Looking good.
Yes, I am. Are you?
We're ready.
Okay, now the screen isn't shared right now, is it?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll start. Okay. Excuse me, one moment, I've shut my door. The governance direction from council has informed the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Plan objectives, which were to develop a housing incentive investment program, establish housing targets and performance measures based on available funding and resources, implement best practices for alternative financing, improve housing choice, and align housing policy with corporate direction. As part of the workshop, we'll explore these topics which may impact the recommendations within the report. Okay, the first recommendation to develop a housing incentive investment program was to create a sustainable financial resource to address housing priorities and supply gaps through targeted investment areas not met by the private market. This would be accomplished through capital support to housing partners based on the budget and as a leveraged strategy to capture additional investments from other sources. Municipal investments would support multiple jobs and support economic development and business attraction. Lower housing costs support poverty reduction strategies, reducing reliance on social support services and saving money for provincial programs. This example from Sannett shows the incentives provided by the district and the city reduce the average monthly cost of rent, improving the affordability of the project. Municipal contributions were not as significant as federal and provincial funding, but demonstrated a strong leadership commitment towards local housing. If a project is not financially viable at lower rents, it most likely won't be built unless there is some form of development subsidy enabling development at a lower cost. Now we're going to go into the council feedback portion. What we're going to do is try this through Zoom. So at the bottom of your screen, you will see a little arrow that says chat. And if you open that up, a window should have opened up on the right-hand side of your screen. And we will ask some questions, and if you could reply through the chat window, we have a sort of a list of suggested response options. And then you can also provide your feedback in written form. And if you want to engage in discussion at any point in the process, feel free. There's approximately five questions, so we'll try to get through by the 3 o'clock timeline. And if not, you either have, we can have feedback provided through online if you prefer. Okay, regulatory measures, as we heard from Adele, are part of continuous improvement processes implemented by administration to improve housing choices through collaboration with the development industry. Flourish, the city's new MDP, will be looking at planning opportunities to improve housing diversification through both management policies. Approval of the MDP will provide administration with the direction to move forward to implement these. We approved a major rewrite of the Land Use Bylaw in 2019 for land use districts, residential districts, adding more flexibility to two districts and permitting secondary suites such as, and garden and garage suites. In quarter four, administration will be returning to council with new regulations for consideration, as mentioned by Christina. And considering these actions, we feel that the regulatory aspect of housing diversity is being actively pursued and will continue to be pursued through future land use bylaw updates. So we are also, when we're looking at these strategies, some of the development incentive strategies that could be included as a regulatory measure also require financing, so funding. So that is one of the other reasons why we need a funding source to actually enable us to accomplish this. And next slide. Okay. The housing incentive investment programs are used by municipalities to provide a sustainable funding source for housing, similar to funding dedicated to other municipal priorities such as art, dog parks, recreation, and heritage preservation. In order to provide measurable progress on a housing program, a sustainable municipal source is needed for funding predictability and long-term planning. a sustainable municipal source is needed for funding predictability and long-term planning. Also, if we want to develop housing targets, we sort of, we need to know if we have the tools and resources to be able to implement them and meet the targets that we are planning for. The proposed funding model for the housing fund would be to include funding distribution across the housing spectrum, providing opportunities to address a range of imminent needs and also address the maintenance and renewal of affordable housing we already have. Based on the feedback from the Community Living Standards Committee meeting, members of council had concerns with the recommendation to improve non-market housing development opportunities through fiscal measures. And this is one of the areas that we'd like to focus council's time on now. Fiscal measures are an effective municipal strategy. The methods explored include development fee, charge waivers, land management strategies, partnership development strategies, development incentives, and first-time homeowner incentives. Each one of these measures involves a contribution of municipal funding or municipal resources to implement. The primary priority of the strategy is to get people into housing, providing them with the stability to move up the housing market as their conditions allow. Development and municipal fee waivers are used as a method to provide a municipal contribution towards the defined affordability component as a form of municipal support. The pros and cons of this strategy include that it provides cost savings for development, supporting below-market rents through a defined process, improves the ability to attract other development partners, and it's not a funding giveaway. There would be a specific qualification progress, process, and agreements with any fee waivers that would be provided. The method is simple to implement. It has about a moderate, medium direct cost, and it provides a medium benefit. So it's not incredibly expensive, but it is certainly a strategy that really does support affordability. For the first question, we're wondering if council would like to provide their feedback on whether they would support a program to provide reduced development fees for non-market housing initiatives. And we'd like this in a scale of one to five with, you know, would you support it very little or five, you would highly support. And it will give you a couple of minutes to open up to provide your feedback if you can. And we'll move, we'll, we have some time for discussion.
I thought you were going to give us a little poll that we could like click on on Zoom. I've seen that before. But I'm going to just open it up. Go ahead, Wes.
Are you looking for a number that we type into chat? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, if you would.
Or just verbal?
Support, and then you can just, you know, indicate what, whether you would support something like that or not, or what your concerns are.
Well, Lori, I've got a whole bunch of questions around this simply because what it appears you're introducing is a structured financial program for housing with our community. I thought that was a provincial responsibility.
Housing is a provincial responsibility, but it also is a municipal responsibility. The city, you know, municipal representatives are the closest to their housing population. And also by saying it's strictly, we have the ability to leverage funding and also to indicate our support for more provincial funding. If we don't do that, we are most likely not going to get anything.
You know, I recognize that, but we've always sort of encapsulated that conversation with contributions like land or one-time funding, that sort of thing. But what you're proposing here is sustainable, ongoing funding for for a provincial responsibility. And I need to understand how that plays out before I give you a number, because I was going to type a three, which is pretty vanilla.
Okay, yeah, well, that's fair. I think, you know, what we're not asking for, what we were asking for was a modest amount. So it would be approximately $240,000 a year, which is the cost of a single unit. But I think we could leverage that money significantly to probably get 10 to 10 times that amount of affordable units through, you know, a small municipal incentive. We are not ever going to be a major funder of housing, and I don't think we intend to ever, you know, that is not the intent of a municipal strategy. But I think we're not going to be able to do this just by asking for the province to fund it or the federal government, because most incentive programs that they have, they always ask if there is municipal support or support from other sources, which includes municipalities. So.
Yeah, fair enough.
Jackie.
Thank you. Lori, so you said that this has a medium benefit, but it's going to cost the city, which you've just explained again. But could it be presumed that this is an investment into and property tax? Hopefully, these people, as you say, graduate into market housing, and we eventually recoup it through property taxes.
Correct, yes.
So while, while it's a cost at this time, there's an, there's an end to, there is a benefit to us in the end.
For sure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know what? I mean, specifically, we're just asking here, and this question is around development fees. I mean, I don't want to get into the whole philosophical argument because we, we just had that on Monday with the whole idea of what, what's our role around building supportive housing or transitional housing for youth. And theoretically, we would have none of that in a, in a, in a pure world. But we're not, we don't live in that reality. We, we deliver services all across the board that cross over, you know, into other levels of government. And it's just, it's, it's just the reality that we have to live in. It's not the right way, and we've always going to continue to advocate strongly to receive the, the proper funding because you're tying it in. I mean, but if you really want to go to extremes, the whole entire AHS system and how prevention should also be our responsibility and how we deal with our own health will obviously have major downstream effects on all levels of the system. So, I mean, I don't, I don't want to get that broad, but right now, we're talking about specifically development fees. And it's a program that we, that I'm sure would maybe be only accessed a few times throughout as we look at opportunities around getting non-market housing. It might, it might be every year, might not be. So I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, we're not, we're in a little different area where we're talking about development fees, and I'm, I support it. But those, I didn't want to type all that into my comment section. Otherwise, my one finger typing would be here for quite a while. So anyways, but that's kind of where we're, that's kind of where I'm leaning. But I'm, I'm more into that mid-range, three to four. And I like vanilla, Wes. I've always liked vanilla, because you can add so much to vanilla. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Jackie, did you want to give a number on the scale of one to five? You don't have to.
Yeah, I was just about to hit send on my chat. I've already written it up. I'm a four.
Okay. And I think I would be there too. I think we need to see a business case and how much this is really going to cost.
Good. Okay, I guess we'll just move on to the next question. Okay. Can you see it?
Nope, you're going backwards.
Okay. Okay, land management strategies. Okay. Land management strategies are an effective method to provide municipal support for non-market housing development through long-term strategic planning of land assets. While land actions are already being considered by council, a long-term land strategy will ensure that land for housing continues to be considered in municipal land use transactions. Some of the potential actions are to designate surplus sites for community housing purposes that are no longer required for municipal uses, implement municipal policies to co- locate housing with other municipal uses. That could be fire halls, libraries, you know, recreation centers, acquire land for non-market housing conjunction with other municipal uses. That means if you were planning to purchase land for any reason, you might want to consider non-market housing at the same time. And consider the repurposing of former surplus school sites for housing in partnership with school boards. I know we do have, we have difficulty getting surplus school sites, but also in the works for coming down the pike is, I guess, the relocation of Father Jan to Riverside. So that might be something that could be considered in the future.
It was one in Oakmont, right, Wes?
Have to chisel out out of the school boards.
And then also, if we dispose of land, like it could be for worldwide arrays or something like that, a percentage of the revenue that we got from that could be put in into a land, a housing fund. So we can, you know, broaden things. So the next question for council is, would you support a long-term strategy for long-marked, non-market housing? You can answer either on the chat window or else if you want to answer in person, that's good too.
You, I already had my number five written, and you messed me up.
I'm just going to go with the, with my thumbs up.
That works too?
No brainer.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So.
Wes, you're good?
Well, I think the last one going forward so far.
He's trying to figure out how to do the thumbs up.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for your feedback on that one. All right, now we'll get on to the next one. Right, so. Three, housing capital grants. All right. So housing capital grants are a method to provide municipal partnership support to support development cost affordability goals. This is a strategy that leverages funding from other sources, which we discussed earlier, and provides a level of comfort to financial partners that there is municipal support for it. So, you know, it also helps with the financing capability of the project. We, there's one that you could consider a housing fund through, you could consider municipal support through, for housing capital grants, either through a housing fund or council support on a one-off basis. The one issue with council support on a lot of bases is you still don't have a budget available for the council support. So I don't know if municipal contributions are typically lower than funding provided by other sources, but municipal funding is very effective. The method to provide this could be from simple to complex. It would be a high benefit, and it would be a mean cost depending on the value of an incentive. Okay, the next question would is, would you support capital grants to non-market housing partners through a sustainable housing fund or through application to council outside the normal budget process? This is one for housing fund and two for requests to council.
You even combine that, Lori, like you could have a fund set up, but, but you would still have to have every one of the projects approved by council that would be withdrawn out of that fund, right?
Perfect, yeah, that would work really well.
What size of a fund are you looking at?
The four-dollar one, is that you proposed or?
That would be proposed, yeah. I mean, if it's a modest budget, but at least, you know, if the funding isn't expended every year, the funds would collect.
So would it be like, almost like a reserve? Would you set up a reserve, or would it be like we do with our capital operating grants? Or the other one, the, sorry, the one, it just went out of my, where we designate X number of dollars per resident every year.
We would be designating X number of dollars per resident per year. Potentially, you know, we are looking at spending it, but if it doesn't get expended, it would just carry on, carry over.
I mean, we've talked about that, the amount of funding that we've been giving to the Affordable Housing Society. If we'd been putting in a fund for the last five, 10 years, we could have probably opened a few doors. So I think there's appetite, just maybe depends on how much. Jackie?
I'm thinking down the road, Lori, and thinking about the presentation that we had from Nancy. Is this, is this the kind of fund that if we had agreement with our partners that we could embark on a relationship with them, our regional partners, to create a a policy that works for us all around a housing fund? So that it's, I don't know. This is a complicated question, and I'm not articulating it well. But what I'm trying to say is, you know, I'm all for creating something here in St. Albert, but what I'd really like to see is a shared, shared cost for a shared benefit in the region around a housing fund. And is that even a possibility, or is that? Yeah.
I don't see, I, I think it's your money. You can do it, you know, if you think that's the direction you want to go, I certainly.
And we could, you know, we, I mean, I'm not saying that for today because that, that takes collaboration time and, and talking to our partners. But it is something that it would be nice to get a housing fund up, but also start bringing in our municipal neighbors into creating some leverage around a regional approach. So, okay, I know that wasn't very clear, but thanks for for humoring me with the answer.
Can I ask one more question?
Okay, hold on, Ken, let Christina go in then.
Just to Councilor Hanson's question and to expand on Lori's, I think what the fund does provide administration and the city of Queen Albert is a degree of flexibility to capitalize on some of those partnerships without having to come back and all of a sudden having a shocking number come in front of council. This is kind of like your piggy, there's, there's an opportunity for a portion of this to be a bit of a piggy bank for those opportunities. So that's just.
I think that's right. I think you articulated what I was trying to say, Christina. It's a good thing that you're here.
So, so my question has always been, and since, even since this was presented to our committee, was around, not, not so much around the amount, because you're talking four dollars. So that's a latte, as you said in our presentation, Lori. And it's just around the fact that, for me, I mean, it's just sort of like, it's hard without having all of the parameters around what and how. And I know it was someone that articulated in the report and the final report. And I, I'm, I went through it again, just trying to see, but I just, I wasn't, I just wasn't assured that, you know, what does our support look like and how does it, and then like, does it go over to operating dollars? Does it go over to actual capital? Does it go over to, like, I mean, you know, we say we're going to identify gaps, but, but I mean, to me, there's just, I just, I just need a more of a guideline before I could say that I would 100% support something like that. And then obviously, what's everybody's mind is the current financial impacts right now. And would this be implemented maybe in 2022 or something like that? So, you know, the, the housing incentive itself is, is great because I'm thinking that, you know, there's so many great things we could do with it, and it's already been identified as potential opportunities. But at the same time, you know, there's just, there's just not a lot of, not a lot of information that I, that I could say, yeah, that's what I would use that money for. So that's kind of where I'm cautious on. Sorry, Wes, you're in there. I can hear you sighing. I can hear you sighing, either that or you got a whoopee cushion.
You know what? I agree with you, Ken. I gotta tell you, Madam Mayor, I'd love to have an in-camera session on this one.
Can do that.
Because if we start setting up a, a fund like this.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, that's what the St. Albert Housing Society has been asking for us for a long time, is sustainable funding for them for, for years. And, and so we, we used to give it to them, and they started to build it up. But, but what we end up finding is that most of our money was supporting their administrative structure. And, and then there was a whole lot of question around how that was going to handle over there at Nevada Place. And, and are we getting our money's worth by expanding the numbers there? So I think we need to be careful before we start setting up yet another housing supporting structure. uh, housing supporting structure. I gotta tell you why my interpretation of why La Duke was so successful is they had one body doing everything.
I agree.
And I gotta tell you that we have that right now. We have exactly what La Duke Foundation has, but we haven't, but the structure of homeland housing back in the day when La Duke was getting so successful, Homeland wasn't in the same position. They didn't have the same sort of leadership. And, and so when they started expanding into affordable housing, Sturgeon Foundation was still doing lodges. And so St. Albert started moving in a different direction. But if we start fracturing again how we spend our money, we're going to be in the same boat with little bits here and there and not getting big banged for our dollars. That's my personal opinion.
And I, I agree with you, Wes, but I think, from what I understand, this was, I like the word piggy bank. And then council could partner with whomever we wanted to build capital, not to do operations. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Mayor Herron, it would be for capital, not operations. It, that's the direction from council is that they wanted, they would look at capital grants, but not ongoing operational costs.
And it's funny, Wes, when you said we have that right here in St. Albert, I thought you were going to say that capital region housing.
I know.
I know, you're talking homeland, but.
But don't forget homeland, you talk about regional partners. I mean, Homeland Services is the size of the state of Connecticut, from here to Lesser Slave River. And actually, Homeland Foundation actually has, how many units under? Uh, Lori, you have it, I thought it was like 700 units uh, under management. Isn't that, isn't that what it is? Or maybe I'm mistaken, all told. But it's, it's not a small organization.
No, they've done well in, in their niche, I would say, right?
Oh, they're trying to expand, but that's, that's my only point here.
Yes, um, I agree, there's, you know, I mean, Homeland Housing's operational area is very large. But I also agree with Councilor McKay is that we also have different needs and probably the rural community. So I think that has to be fleshed out as well.
So I don't know if we've really landed on an answer to your question. So this is, the question is just for capital, not for operating. Would you support building a piggy bank essentially?
I, I don't like that term. I, I, all due respect to Christina and yourself, I don't like that term. I, I don't like that term right now at this particular time. I, and I don't, well, I just, I just think that, I mean, I mean, that's why I like a reserve or something like that that we looked at dealing with that potentially could, could fall into that sense. But a piggy bank just means.
Sorry, it is a reserve.
Yeah, it just, it just sounds a little just too, too, well, I won't say it. It just sound, it just isn't, doesn't sound right. But I honestly, I'm gonna, I don't, I'm, I'm just leery about putting a number down because I see both sides.
I don't think we put a number on this today.
Oh, well, a bunch, I see numbers. So my.
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant dollar number.
No, number. And, and I, I, I take Council Broadhead's concerns. And I think, to be fair to Lori, and Lori and I have had offline conversations on this one too. I think this is more worthy of an in-camera, more detailed conversation with the entire council because I don't want to, I don't want to put a score and, and give direction and we're missing three counselors right now. So.
Well, you know, that's honestly.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Not our fault. We're here, we're doing the work.
Fair enough, but fair enough, but I think we need to be, I think there needs to be more that we can say in camera. And I, because we're all kind of dancing around some of the issues and topics here. So I.
David, David's on, on the call. David, can you type into the chat a real motion, quick motion? We'll go on camera right now.
Can we do it on Zoom with everybody on?
Oh, no, we can't. Man. Should have had this one in person.
Well, we had trouble with that one too. Well, as it turned out, we probably could have, but.
Yeah.
But this is a committee of the whole. We can't.
We can still move into camera though.
Yeah, we can move into camera, but we still can't make a decision.
No. Well, that's fair. But I mean, and that's.
We can make recommendations though.
We can make a, make a.
Can I just say, philosophically, I agree with number one. But I think that what we haven't landed on is that governance structure, which is the bigger piece.
Right.
And, and that's what I put in the chat. So I want to say, Lori, philosophically, I think that a capital fund for affordable housing or for housing is a smart thing to do, whatever that housing looks like. However, I'm with Wes that we don't, it can't all be downloaded on us. We need to find the right operating body to help us with this and I'm not sure that we agree on that yet. So, but I'm comfortable with saying today that I, I think something should be set up around this.
I'm comfortable, go ahead, Ken.
I just see Tamara's note on chat.
Well, you know, it's almost three and we're supposed to end at three.
Fair enough, okay, fair enough.
I, I can say that I would support a fund for sure, but I would also need that everything coming out of that fund to have a council motion of approval. So one and two, essentially. And we would need some financial policy around that fund that would indicate that this is a matching fund. So we need matching from the province or matching from federal government or whatever. And, and exactly what Jackie said too, about we need a partner to help. We need a governance structure. No. But I don't see a problem. And even, even, we could even change some of our, our surplus, like the land. We have a policy on what we do with, with money when we sell land. You know, a portion of that could maybe go into a fund because quite often our contribution to an affordable build, like the one on St. Thomas, is just the land. And so that wouldn't be sitting in the fund, but it is a financial contribution. So that needs to be part of the fund as well.
But, but that's exactly kind of where I was saying, there's, where's, I don't have all of the, I mean, I don't have the principles, I don't have the, the whole kind of individual, what counts where. I mean, I think that's a great example, what you've used and I used it earlier in the chat as well. And I mean, by us giving up land, potentially there's, there's a financial cost there. Is that factored in? And I, I realize that's not exactly what was brought back to committee. There was an actual dollar figure commitment of four dollars a year, which is, doesn't seem significant, but like, like we've already had the conversation. Is it philosophical? Is it the right time? Because based on what we're going through, is it ever going to be the right time? What, how would it work from, is it a governance? Is it operating? So I, I, I beat this up. I think, I mean, if Lori can take away kind of what she needs from this, I'm, I'm happy with that. But I, I, I'm not going to put a number down because I, I don't know where I am. I, I, I could be anywhere between one and five.
You're a gray area.
I'm just gray.
Yeah, you are.
I'm just gray and bald.
Okay, that's, I, so I think all that, that our staff is looking for is permission to go and work out what you just asked for, Ken. Dollar values and, and policies around it. And I, I would like to see it go to that next step.
If, if that's, if Lori, if you got that from that, great.
We'll work and see what we can do.
Just get my car out of your driveway.
Okay. Uh, right, now the next, we have two questions left. I don't know if you have time for the two questions.
I'm good. Are you guys good?
Yep.
Okay, Wes.
Okay, um, some of the other options that we could consider. I don't think that first-time homeownership is one of the key considerations that we want to look for for home housing affordability, but it does get people into housing that would not be able to normally be into that housing. It is also something we could consider as a financial, you know, as part of the housing program, but we want to get some feedback from you on whether that would be something you were interested in or not. There's basically three actions that you could do for, to help first-time homeowners. One is to provide some level of financial assistance towards a down payment, which could be repaid after, when the home sold. The one, we did go through this exercise with a, with a potential program. And one thing we did find out is that the funding source needs to be arms-length from the developer or so they, in order for a mortgage to be qualified. So that would require a not-for-profit entity or municipality to operate. Deferred payments for land, like if, as we do do land strategies, it's something you could consider. So that, say on a school site, if you wanted to develop first-time homeownership housing, the land could be, the payments could be deferred for five years or something so that they only have to pay for the house for the first five years and then they would have more money in order to, you know, afford the payments for the land and the house afterwards. The other thing you can look at is shared equity mortgages, which are being implemented by CMHC. They did have a program for municipalities to look at, but the conditions weren't really that good and it didn't make much sense for us to do that. But a shared equity mortgage would now enable the municipality to share in the profits when the home was sold. So actually, these are not simple to implement. I didn't revise that. I think it's more complicated to implement, but it is something that you could consider for now or the future.
Can we go back one slide? Just go back to the other slide. I'm still kind of reading, okay. So the shared equity mortgages is the one that we had the meeting with that fellow a month or so ago?
Yeah.
Is that going anywhere?
No, because of the fact that the way they had proposed it, it was the developers that were providing the funding for it. And there was no, they were not arms-length away from the purchasers. So it is not something that, to the mortgage requirements that they could actually, the generous or any other mortgage supplier could, could use. It has to be in arms-length, so that would mean the city would have to take a more active role in, in developing it and managing it.
Just some readings. I saw Hans go, go ahead, Jackie.
Um, Lori, on number two, um, supporting a first-time home buyer. So after five years, would their, would their deferred payments on the land become more expensive than they would have originally paid?
No.
Are we asking them to save up for five years so that they can pay more in payments later?
No, if it was a municipal program and it was municipal land, that would mean that the city would just not accept, would not, the purchaser would not have to pay for their component of the land in the first five years. After that time, they would have to pay the full, full amount through the mortgage payments.
Who uses this? Does anybody, do you have an example?
Uh, yes, that was one of the examples through the city of Edmonton, their first-place home, first-place program.
Right.
I believe it's also been done in La Conne as well.
It is the first one requiring a, a, a not-for-profit entity or arms-length. Is that difficult to do? Is that something widely used?
Um, it has been used in attainable housing. In Calgary, they have an attainable housing program and that model is used there. The challenges with the program, like the, the program worked very well for the first while. And then because the market crashed, the homes were being sold at less than what they were purchased as. So that meant that the program lost money. So, you know, it is, I mean, there, with any program, there are risks that it, it works or it doesn't work. Before that, they made lots of money, but afterwards, they, you know, they're, they're looking at restructuring now. It's also been, there's been a couple of other programs in Calgary that have had the same sort of policies. One was through Habitat for Humanity and Partnership. And then there was another one through Liberty, I believe it was.
I, I, I mean, I guess I'll just comment that, you know, I do, I would like to help first-time homeowners. But our banks are set up that they should be helping first-time homeowners as well. So I'm not entirely sure. I feel like I want to take this on, but I'll wait for others to comment.
I don't want to be a mortgage broker. Sir, can I keep on going? Is this something that the actual authority could do? Like, like Homeland or, I mean, could they be implementing these same strategies?
Well, I can't speak for Homeland because I think they have to speak for themselves.
Well, yeah, I didn't.
It's legally, I think, yeah.
I don't know.
Organizationally, I mean, it could be any not-for-profit entity, any organization that wishes to do that.
Yeah, it doesn't have to necessarily fall on the municipality. I mean, if we had a housing authority, they could potentially look at these strategies.
Correct.
All right, yeah, all that. Thank you.
Okay, so the question was. Question four. So I gather, yeah, I think I've got, I've got feedback from three of you, I believe.
Yeah. I think so. And this is not high on my priority list because I don't think there's enough bank for the buck in it. I think if we're going to be investing money, we're going to have to pick one area, whether it's financial assistance or building a fund or whatever. So. And I think the risk is a little scary here.
Thank you. All right, now we get into the last question was, and I think I already know the answer to this because we've already discussed it. You know, that we were looking at the housing investment program from a taxation base, but I think you've sort of given us feedback that you already want to provide, you want more information before you'd even consider this, something like this. Based on what the available budget was and what the program would look like.
But I'm open to it. That would be me.
Yeah, and I think, Lori, from our conversations, you know that I'm open to it. I don't want to close the door to it. I just don't have the information I need. And I, I realize all the hard work you've put into this. And, but I, I just need more, more structure.
Okay.
Like a, like even a business case. And I realize that there's a lot of work to that.
Jackie just said she's open to it, too. Just need to understand her better.
Okay, I think that, that really concludes our presentation. If there's any future other direction you'd like to provide us, we'd be happy to hear that at this present time.
Well, the only thing I can think of is I heard some thoughts from the four of us about more conversations and maybe an in-camera. Is that mostly related to a governance framework, everyone? And who's running the show?
I would say it's governance for sure.
Yeah.
But I also, I also want to be La Duke Foundation. I also would just like to talk about that a little bit more because it's clearly a success that's taken a long time. But where do you start? What do regional municipalities mean to us? All of this. So anyway, govern, I guess the governance piece though, for me, is first. And then we pick it up from there.
The big question is, do we have enough in common with some of these small towns who are north or we have more in common with Edmonton? And maybe that's, you know. Anyway, I think, I don't know how to do this. And Lori, we've talked about this in the past, the governance structure. And it probably does have to be an in-camera conversation. Because I think there's a bigger appetite to commit municipal dollars, like city of St. Albert taxpayer dollars, if we have confidence in where that dollar's going and a good partner. That's, I think, the key. Right. And you're right, if we had Nancy and the La Duke Foundation here, I think that we'd be saying yes to all of us. Maybe not all of it.
Making a statement when you say that, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
And I'd love to address that if we went in camera.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little hard. Even, even though I like their mayor, I don't want him here.
Do you want to do that now, Wes? Tamara said she could set up a Zoom link for us.
Yeah, well, I honestly. honestly, I think everybody should be there.
Okay, all right, all right. So that's our follow-up, Lori. We'll find a day that, that we can have seven members of council in camera to talk a little bit more about. Okay. All right, anything else, guys? I don't know if Kevin or Carrie here, do you want to chime in?
Oh, I don't have any doubt.
Okay, Carrie? Disappeared, Missouri disappeared.
I, I'm having trouble every time I touch it. It kind of, it's so sensitive. No, I'm good. Thank you.
You know, just to, to Lori, and to have your guests present to us today, I think that was, um, really helpful because not all of us have been on these task forces or these foundations. Like, you, you guys have the benefit of being on council for 10 years and you've been talking about, and every time we have this conversation, I learn a little bit more.
You know what? I feel like we're missing is, is our foundation, Homeland. Honestly, I felt very disconnected with Homeland over the last three years. I would actually struggle to tell you the executive director's name right now. We're not having a very good connection between our, our council rep and the foundation and even just the foundation approaching, like I'm sure, like Nancy was talking about how they would get together with all the mayors and councils in the region. We're disconnected from our current foundation. So maybe, Lori, that's something we should work on and invite them to come to another workshop such as this. Uh, and then maybe after that, we could go into camera and talk about the governance structure. I mean, we've heard a lot from the Housing Society in St. Albert. I'm pretty sure we understand their model and their their openness and willingness to work with us, but I don't feel that from the one body that's requisitioning dollars from the city.
Um, the reason I didn't invite Homeland to this, this workshop is I wanted you to see, uh, something that was an unbiased and an unbiased view from a non-St. Albert perspective.
You just happened to invite the best one in the region in.
So, but I'm sure I've, I've been in conversation with Raymond and he did provide an attachment for this agenda report, which you all have. And I believe he would be more than happy to come and discuss things with you.
I'd be remiss on my part to not establish that relationship a bit better.
Okay.
All right, anything else, guys? There's no motions here, right? Just.
No, I just want to echo, echo Jackie's comments though to, to Lori, because certainly at committee, we asked, we felt that coming to a workshop or a committee of the whole meeting to get more and to help her kind of come forward with even expanding out the strategies. And I, I just don't want, sorry, I just don't want you to get frustrated, but you can see this is a pretty complicated situation for us. And, and I appreciate all the work that you do on this topic. It's very important to our community and thank you very much.
Okay, well said. All right, I think we're adjourned. Thanks, guys. Sorry I ran a bit late, but you guys were too chatty.
All good.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.